Good evening, everyone. Could we please everyone stand for the pledge and remain standing to the land and grow in state. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands unafraid and invincible with liberty and justice.
The Salamaca City School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Waka, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaca School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaca City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. First, we'll move on to our oath of office and new board member.
I, Tracy, superseding do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully be charged and be used as Board of Education Member from May 17, 2023 through June 30, 2028, according to the best laws of.
Thank you. Right, welcome aboard. Tracy did take the oath of office prior to this meeting, but we wanted it formally recognized with the board just as an FYI. Next, we need a motion to approve the agenda, but before that, are there any changes, updates to the agenda?
Yes, there are a couple of minor revisions since it was originally published on Friday. We postponed or removed the second grade presentation that will be at our next Board of Agenda Meeting or Board of Education Meeting. We revised the retiring list in regard to your service for one of the retirees. We removed a leave of absence for Jennifer Wilson. We added an administrative leave resolution and we added a student letter and information regarding the alliance protocol.
And with that, I need a motion to approve the other.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstaining motion carried. We'll move on to our recognitions and presentations and we'll start off with our team leaders.
They're out in the hall. Mr. Morrison will be bringing them in.
Right, hello, everybody. So these are some of our leaders, grades three through seven. We had pretty good handful that couldn't make it tonight because of sports, other obligations, pre-K graduation siblings. So we just wanted to stop and be able to see all of you and we put a little video together. Actually, Grace Hodera was really super awesome and helped us put a media project together. So we just wanted to be able to play that for you guys tonight. Somebody here, somebody must be new.
People are, oh yeah.
Perfect. All right, so enjoy. So we just wanted to give you guys an overview of some of the really cool, awesome things that they did in their community this year. Salamaca has some awesome kids and they really are so goal driven and they really care about everybody around them. And I can't believe I'm not crying because I like ugly cried when I watched this video for the first time. It was at my desk. I'm like, oh, I don't know if I'm getting through that board meeting. But I just wanted them to take a quick minute, introduce them by name and then Lorelei, then you can be up. Go ahead.
Eva.
Olivia.
Carrie.
Alita.
Brennan.
Gibson.
Lorelei.
Adam.
Colin.
Carol.
Anna.
Freya.
Striker.
Willow.
Elian.
Awesome. And we have about 25 kids that were not able to come tonight, like I said, because of other obligations. And so Lorelei, go ahead. Great, and great to have Dr. Beeler be good.
Wow, how wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for your support this year for the leaders teams. We really appreciate it.
We're looking forward to seeing what great things you guys are gonna do. It's awesome.
What was one of the highlights? Who wants to say something? You already look like you would.
Getting you the eat donuts.
What about the DPW? You got to get into the machine. You thought that was awesome.
Yeah, going into the division stuff.
Elian.
Getting to meet my new old people.
They were able to go and meet with veterans who talked about the Vietnam War and talked about, you know, their experience and why it's so important to get back to the community and those kind of things. So that was a really cool experience for the kids, too.
Anyone else? Highlight? Come on, somebody.
The bandit team.
That was really cool. And so many had never been to a game, so it was really neat to be able to see their their expressions.
It is awesome. I was up at the bandits game and I saw a Salamaca school bus and I went, what's going on here? Yeah, Dr. Beeler, this is one of our buses here. They're great leaders.
Yeah. Yeah, it was really cool, so.
Great.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have our presentation for our NISBA awards.
Yes, that is myself. So we know that our school district places a strong emphasis on professional development for all of our staff members and for our educators. But it's nice to see that even our board members live by the example that they set. And tonight, we are recognizing Mr. Kerry John for his contribution and dedication to the district. And he has achieved 250 points from the New York State School Boards Association. And not only does that get him this fancy certificate and portfolio, but he also gets an additional complimentary training so he can continue on.
I'd like to airline my also carry. Congratulations. Next, we have our presentation for Indigenous Studies Standards.
So we will turn this over to our Native American curriculum team.
Can we just? Absolutely. We'll keep this very short. We're really here just to answer any questions that anybody has. We've been presented to you and and the IEC and PTO six as the process was going on. And this is about two years we're talking to people that is culminating tonight. So we're asking for the board to approve the Indigenous Studies Standard, which we should have a copy of. The last of the draft. And yeah, just to remind you, our process was to, you know, start with our Indigenous Studies Committee and then work through the community and people at the Seneca Nation and within the education. And you know, a whole variety of people with names are on the first page of the standards. And so far, we have presented them at NIDA and Native Voices and gotten really good response. In fact, we talked to this today and a guy called Inspiration, so we hope that's where it's. So that's it. I really don't want to go through all the standards tonight. It was a big, big night. Happy to answer any question. We are happy.
So I know one big thing happened since the last time you were here with Seneca Nation. Do you just want to touch base on that?
Yeah, May 13th, yes, the Seneca Nation Council endorsed the standards. We did one, one presentation where we talked through them and then another asking with the resolution, asking for endorsement. And they, you know, as a female, they endorsed it.
Great. I know it was a lot of hard work, so. And a lot of time. So congratulations on that.
Well, we hope that this is the beginning that you guys and you guys approve them, then we can start using them specifically and not just testing them as much.
Does anybody have any question? Okay. And we'll move on to our next presentation, which is our Health and Wellness Policy Update.
All right, and we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Bartoszak.
All right, thank you guys very much. This is a longer presentation, but we will go through relatively quickly. Each school district that participates needs to establish a health and wellness policy. We started these conversations in district with the Health and Wellness Policy Committee. Let's say over a year ago. Followed up with several meetings and this is a part of just public information in meeting together and in getting it out of the school board. All right, so these are the required elements. Speaker participation, nutrition guidelines, education and promotion. Physical education, activity monitoring and evaluation, public notification. This presentation was also presented at our town hall in public through our social media pages. Our wellness policy was last updated in 2019 and was assessed throughout the last several months, half a year. Some of this data comes from just informal surveys that were presented to our lunch groups. At lunchtime, we just put up some QR codes. We also presented this or engaged with the community at our health fairs, just tried to gather some feedback and just asked, do you even know if we have a wellness policy? Water, obviously, we want to drink water, want to promote hydration. We have a little bit of an epidemic of caffeinated drinks, significantly caffeinated drinks in our in our society right now where everyone's going to those quicker. The monsters and the red bulls and we just want to prevent or promote the water without all the sugar. And the food and beverages that are provided to our students. Provided but not sold during a school day. Strongly encouraged to meet the USDA smart snack in school nutrition standards. Beverages provided but not sold to students on school campus during school day are required to meet the USDA smart stack. There are just some pants and charts of what those standards look like and what we need to, what we need to meet. Beverages without added sugar are official sweeteners with each sold vending machines and brought to school day turns to only beverages without added sugar. And allow alcohol beverages, milk water, higher percent juices, just trying to avoid the excess of sugar, calories, caffeine. Another part of the survey. Do you agree that school encouraging healthier drink choices, not any added sugar? Once again, this is for school, staff and some community members. Fundraisers, which can be a point of a topic of conversation. And all food and beverages available for sale to students to fundraisers on the school campus during school day will meet at a minimum smart stack standards. And school sponsors fundraisers outside of the school day will be encouraged to support goals of this wellness policy. A list of healthy fundraisers will be provided to group sponsoring fundraising activity. It just gets into other food that's sold to students after school. Fifty percent of foods and beverages that are available for sale at schools, events outside of the school day, these are exceed smart stack standards. Some of these can be tricky to define, but we're trying to, you know, at least promote and match these goals as much as possible. Another survey about choices and limiting food to added sugar. District Food Service staff will meet students in grades four through 12 monthly to solicit feedback. And John Haley and his staff have done a great job of that. And just trying to connect what we, what we serve with the likes of our students. And feedbacks usually pretty good. Are you satisfied with meals, breakfast and lunch? You know, some of the feedback was about hot breakfast possibly being more available. Physical activity will not be withheld, canceled for instructional makeup time or disciplinary action unless it's a danger to remember others. All classroom teachers and particularly those engaged in instruction, five are strongly encouraged to incorporate in the school day short breaks for students. And Corinne Quinn has been leading some of that in classroom breaks. Curriculum and opportunities for teachers to get their support and how to achieve this. Just give kids more opportunity to move. And then recess will be offered one daily period of recess for a minimum of 20 minutes. This requirement, this requirement will not apply to days when students are late, early or otherwise. Outdoor recess will be offered as much as possible. This promoting movement, promoting opportunity to get out, get rid of some of that energy. I know that's the highlight of my kid's day when they get outside and it's play. So just continue to promote it. This was the obvious, the biggest, yes, we want to have recess from the kids. And this goes into the high school. They don't always get out as much, but just 20 minutes possibly getting on the track or get the opportunity to walk. Maybe during a lunch period or something could, could be valuable. So once again, we get on this with Corinne Quinn and some of the the SCL stuff, just adding movement into learning, adding adding things that into the curriculum. And we will offer opportunities for and after school, physical activity clubs, intramuros, nurse plastic sports. We have a pretty good biking community. Kids are all out on the Penzies now and got a lot of kids who bike to or from school. A lot of bikes were there today and I know we had the bike rodeo Sunday. But it might be something we want to bring back again for at least promote a little bit more of that. We do have a lot of district kids who like to bike. Community access to district facilities for physical activity. We've opened up our spaces, putting our fitness center and our weight room, two hours roughly four times a week throughout the winter months. It slowed down significantly. Later spring, when the weather changes, we've also opened up the pool Saturday morning since November. For open community swim, that'll continue this summer. After our lessons, 12:30 to 2:30, Monday through Thursday. We don't get a ton of public usage of our indoor facilities during the summer or summer or warm weather months. But if there is a want to, we can make it happen. And you feel that you have enough opportunity to access our spaces. Our survey. On just official, which is me. We have an email that will be there for the remainder. People can access that with questions and we can, you know, try to create as much opportunity for movement as possible. All right, any questions? No, that was very exciting.
Very exciting. Next, we have our epic presentation.
This is gonna be epic. It is, yes. I've been waiting to say that all afternoon. All right, so this time I'm gonna turn it over to Tara Burgess, who is the Executive Director and Monica Richardson, who is the Director of Family Services for Epic, which is every person influences children. We can switch it if it's easier or makes the flow is better, whichever you like.
Let's, let's.
Can we go to the other presentation?
We'll talk about the past and then we'll talk about the future.
There we go.
That'll be the other way around. Hi, everyone. I am Tara Burgess from Epic, Every Person's Work is Building. We've been working with this group for the last couple of years and really appreciate our time. For the last year, we've For the last year, we've kind of implemented a new process for the district where we did an assessment of your family engagement. Opportunities and policies and practices and that's what I'm going to talk to you about today. So, who is Epic? In addition to the work that we've been doing here, we've been around for forty years and we've heard this at the last presentation that we did. We have been doing family engagement assessments and consultation work for the last twenty-five or so years. We've been providing parenting since nineteen eighty when our organization was founded. One of the next things that we'll be implementing is family opportunity centers and Monica's going to talk a little bit about that. Our funding is through OCFOS and we will, we will be opening a center here in Salamanca School District and one up in Niagara County as well, but I'm not going to steal Monica's thunder. So, if we can go to the next slide, I already said, I am Chair Burgess, Monica's here with me today. So, what is family engagement? Family engagement is, I'll never forget, the very first time I met Dr. Baylor, he said, what is family engagement? So, I started to read the definition and then we could know what really is family engagement. So, family engagement is a number of things and I've been working for two years to try and try and share a little bit about that. So, it is significant in supporting a child's learning. It's not just coming to the school and checking off the box that people work here and having a nice long list of names of people who were, who were in attendance. It's really about parents and families and the community supporting the school and helping children to learn. The school system is, I'm sure all of you know, is complex, so it's really helping families to understand the complexities of the school system, academics and learning. And really supporting families in how to advocate for themselves and how to advocate for more effective schools. It is a shared responsibility, it was not only on the school district to engage with families. There's a lot of families who need support from the community as well, so it's not something that the school district can or should be tasked with doing alone. It's continuous across the child's life. We all know that it's really hard to engage with high schoolers and education at the high school level, but it does happen. It just happens a little bit differently. And it happens across all settings, so back to that, checking the box, families coming into the school district. It's not the only place where engagement or learning is taking place. It's taking place on the lacrosse field, it's taking place at the bandits game, when you're out connecting with veterans and saw with the third graders. All of those pieces that they were doing was really engaging with the community around them and I'm sure a lot of the families were engaged in some of that work as well. So, why is family engagement important? There's some regulatory requirements, we're not going to talk about that, it's boring stuff. The real importance for it is the benefits for teachers, so schools with high family engagement rates typically have higher morale, increased job satisfaction and effectiveness of the staff and the families see benefits typically up there. So, they have increased communication with the teachers and with their students as well. And the benefit to the students is really about the highest piece, the highest reason. So, one of the things that we learned through the assessment and you probably already know this. Attendance is definitely an issue here at Salamanca and really across the country. Right now, family engagement really can help to improve attendance rates, it can help to improve behavior, achievement, higher self-esteem and social skills, mental health. And the benefits for low-income students are even greater than they are for, for other, other groups of children. So, Epic utilizes the National PTA standards for family engagement. There's a number of standards that you can use, we've selected the PTA because you like one of the six standards that they brought in. And one of the top priorities for us is welcoming all communities, all families into the school community. We don't, they specifically don't say just the school, again, we're focusing on the community as a whole, not just the school. So, what do we do for the assessment? Our primary focus was the entire district, so we, sometimes we go in and we will just assess a building of, you know, an elementary school or something. We did the entire district here and we did that through a number of demographic analysis. We looked at the family engagement policies and practices of the school, the website, the communication strategies that the school uses. We did focus groups, family-friendly walkthroughs and interviews and surveys with the district. So, we did, we helped three focus groups. We did one, one family walkthrough through the elementary school building and we did interviews and surveys with forty-eight responses from the surveys. And what's, what did we learn? Absenteeism is a big challenge in the district, I'm sure all of you knew that, you didn't need me to come here and tell you that. The website has a lot of really great resources for families. Your website has some of the most comprehensive resources that I have seen in school district websites. It could use a little better organization, but there's really a lot of stuff on there for families. One of the things that we learned very clearly was that staff and families both feel very overwhelmed in educating our children. I don't think that probably comes as a surprise to any of you either. This district and the surrounding areas have had some significant trauma, poverty and other issues that impact families in the district. And COVID-19 obviously has had an impact. I won't read through all of these, you can, you can kind of read through, but some of the things that we've really noticed are that families really feel that there's a good number of staff and teachers who really make them feel engaged and support feeling welcome to the school. And then there's a number of families who felt like they're treated a little bit differently because of their racial or cultural background. Families were really expressed pretty significantly that they want more information on how to support their children outside of the school. And they were looking for some more information on understanding the rules and policies of the school district. You guys have a lot of policies in place that are on the website, but again, I think some of that comes back to maybe just sharing that and the way that it's being communicated out into the community. There's a strong belief that the staff understand the challenges and the barriers for families to engagement. And there's also a strong belief in the families that the school and the staff are really invested in family engagement and learning, caring for them. Probably feel like being engaged with the school. So, some of the recommendations that we made, some of our foundational beliefs are that the school has to have really strong, capable teaching staff and curriculums in place in order to be able to focus on family engagement. If the school doesn't have a strong staff in place, all the family engagement work that you're trying to do is not going to be successful. We believe that that's present here at Salamanca. We operate from a strengths-based approach and we see that with the, with our families and the staff that we engage with during this, this process. People feel like families come to the table with a lot of skills and the staff believe that, 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 sorry, the families believe that the staff come together with that same belief in families. There's definitely a commitment of both time and resources for family engagement on behalf of the district. And I will say that I think I see that stronger here than I've seen in most of the districts that we've worked with. There's definitely a team approach that's necessary and really understanding the assessment and having a strong belief in strategic planning is important. And I will say that right on the website, the board has made a commitment to modeling a family engagement plan, so we know that exists here. Excellent, thanks. So, our recommendations are to implement a family engagement advisory team, which would be made up of staff from the school, families and community members. And we've had actually a couple of cases where some high school students have been assigned to the committees. It's been very successful. We would encourage you to consider that as well. Develop a strategic family engagement plan, we already know that that's one of the goals for the board, so, you know, that, that ranks up pretty high. Utilizing families as the compass and the vehicle to achieve success, the best way to, you know, get the word about, out about some of the things that the school is doing is to share with the families. Particularly families who are loud, particularly the families who challenge, you know, the staff on some of the things that, that they see, that they'd like to see changed and involve them and solutions and sharing that information out. Supporting professional development, the school does that pretty, pretty strongly, we've seen that, we've done a couple of professional development opportunities and we know that there's other opportunities that are being shared with the, with the staff. And then to specifically target individual families, when we talk about chronic absenteeism, really focusing in on how do we work with families? If that's, if that's a goal for the school, that's one way that family engagement can help support that. Really kind of working together to decide what are the goals that the school and the families want to achieve and figuring out the ways that, that the family engagement advisory team can maybe come up with some strategies to. I think that should be it. Thank you. We've really enjoyed the, the assessment process with the school and we look forward to what comes next.
First.
Any questions on the assessment before I turn it over to Monica?
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's Tara mentioned earlier, my name is Monica Richardson and I'm the Director of Family Services at Epic in Buffalo and I also work here part of the time in the Salamanca office over on River Street. So, in March of this year, Office of Children and Family Services awarded a three-year contract for Epic to open what's called a Family Opportunity Center. Some of the goals for the Opportunity Center are to reduce child abuse and neglect, to make sure that families have the resources and a supportive referral opportunity where they can get the things that they need and so that they're also able to make sure that we are increasing protective factors and building on the strengths that families already inherently have. A lot of times CPS referrals are unfounded, so what the state is trying to do is to make sure that we're making an effort to provide the resources to families and to case managers and social workers so that we can make sure that families have the opportunity to successfully parent without a lot of distresses and distractions and also have the resources that they need. I think we can skip to the next slide. And another goal is just overall improve the safety and wellbeing of children, so the ultimate goal is to make sure that the children are safe and they're able to thrive in their communities, in their homes, as well as in their schools. Next slide. So, the goal of the first year is to concentrate most of our efforts here in the city of Salamanca. It is for Cataracts County, so anyone in the county can receive services from our staff, but the focus is to really support the families in the city of Salamanca for our first year. Year two and year three will work with the district as well, as with the Department of Social Services to determine where we'll focus our efforts for the next two years. For the first year, we will really be providing all of our resources into the hands of families here in the city of Salamanca. Excellent. So, I talked a little bit about the fact that we're trying to increase protective factors, so what are protective factors? Protective factors are all those things I like to think of it as sort of like that bubble wrap, all of those things that insulate you from all of the negative things that happen around you. So, we want to make sure that we're strengthening families' capacity to understand those things. Excellent. So, protective factors to deal with family resilience, so how well is the parent able to bounce back from different things that might be happening? The social and emotional confidence of children, how well are they able to articulate the things that they need and interact with their peers and others? The knowledge of parenting and child development, a lot of times stresses are because we think that children should be doing different things at different stages and actually what they're doing is actually developmentally appropriate for that actual age they're in. We're also in trying to make sure that we increase social connections. Raising children is hard. I have a son, so I know that it's not the easiest thing to do, so parents even need those supports and those connections to make sure that they have a community around them to provide the best opportunities for your children. And then concrete support sometimes, sometimes it's just not talking to the school, it's not just talking to the family partner. You actually need some heart or resources and we're here to connect to those different things. Excellent. So, what does the Family Opportunities Center include and include the family partner? So, those concrete referrals, those supports, both informal and formal. We have a family partner that's able to help support that family in gathering those services. Evidence-based programs, so programs that have been proven to work and be effective. If there's an opportunity or a need, we will have those programs available for parents to participate in. And then opportunities for parent leadership, one of the main things that we'd like to see happen is the fact that the parents that are part of our program are going out and sharing that information with other parents, so we're pulling other people up and alongside. Next slide. So, the benefit of this, a lot of times we go in and there's programs that we create for families and we're telling families what they need. With this program, families are able to come to us and say, these are the things that I need help on. And we can actually provide concrete support and assistance, so if a family is struggling and one of the things that they have an issue with, it would just be a great strength reliever if I was able to pay the camp registration. If parents are connected, we can actually pay that camp registration for a parent. So, we're able to provide some concrete financial assistance for families to take some of those pressures off. Excellent. So, again, my name is Monica Richardson here, some of you may already be familiar with Brittany Dallas, she'll be the family partner for the Family Opportunities Center. And then Jerika Tunderman will be the program coordinator, so she'll be connecting families to the different classes. Any questions?
And you're located on River Street.
On River Street, seventy-nine.
I mean, I seen that, but I wanted to make sure it was there. And then how do you, how are we getting word out to our parents? Are we sending out flyers?
So, we just started hiring staff, so we just really got everybody on board it in May, so we finally have our space and our phone numbers approved, so our flyers are out. I have a couple of flyers that I can leave here today, but we're sharing those and then we're also going throughout the community scheduling presentations. We'll also let the partner agencies know whether we're up and about and then we'll also spend time sharing with the school as well.
They're gonna be on our, our website?
Absolutely. There we are, I believe.
And the other unique thing that we have is we'll have like a family play space, so families can come in and their children can come and they can play with the toys and then the nettle this and the other development and the appropriate things that we have in the building while they're talking to the family partner. The family partner is also able to come into the home if the family is okay with that and meet them right where they are to make it easier, so we don't have a transportation barrier. We are excited to be here. Thank you. You're very welcome.
So, I think our first meeting with Epic was about three years ago and as Mrs. Burgess mentioned, we say that term family engagement. And it bugs me a little bit because I don't actually know, now I know what it means, but at that point in time, it's one of those sort of glossy terms, if we want to improve family engagement. But what does that actually look like and what does that actually mean? Because it really involves much more than just coming to a performance or attending a game and then that's it, right? We want families to be actively engaged with us and supporting the work that we're doing in school and then we can support them. You know, a former mentor that I had used to talk about education as a three-legged stool with the student, the family and the school, and when one of those legs isn't there, it becomes exceptionally difficult to sit on and it's much more work to keep the balance. So, one of the things that Epic will help us do is ensure that the family support piece and the family engagement piece, that leg is firmly attached to that stool so that we can work with the student and then do what we do best at the schools and really be able to create a good platform for learning to occur and pull that all together kind of good. I'm surprised myself, I hope I'm going sometimes. But we're really excited to have Epic here, they've done some great work over the past couple of years and this Family Opportunities Center is really going to make, I think, a great difference, so we're really looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you again for coming now. Awesome.
I just had a follow-up question off to Tara.
Yep.
So, back to your recommendations, implementing a family engagement advisory team. So, are you going to be involved with the advisory team in developing two, five?
Yeah, so we'll have, we'll have two staff that will be participating in that city as well. And to help walk through, you know, all of the pieces, the consultation was to, there would be, there would be trainings, I would assume, with the, with the team to get to know each other, so some, some kind of personal getting to know how each other works. And then trainings around our differentiated family engagement model, which really talks to, each family comes with different, a different set of needs and a different need for engagement, so some families don't really need a lot of engagement, they're doing the work that needs to be done at home or out in the community. Other families need stronger supports and how do we understand and approach each of them differently? And then really walking through kind of where do you want to start, what are the goals you want to set? Do you want to accomplish everything, you know, the, right out of the gate? So, where are those kind of higher level, longer-term strategic things that you want to be thinking about over a three-year plan maybe? Where are some low-hanging fruit, things that you can really see some success? There's a lot of really good things going on and I think a lot of that's just communicating it out to people so that they know, here's some things that are working. Maybe what are ways that we, you know, we'll kind of scatter that a little bit further. So, it's a, it's kind of a long-term, short-term kind of. Um, so it's a, it's kind of a long-term, short-term kind of, um, process. And we'll be right there, you know, to kind of walk through what did that look like and and really help you take the goals that you want to achieve and kind of put some action steps to them.
Okay, so you mentioned training. So we developed this family engagement advisory team. They're going to get training first and foremost before we start looking to engage families.
Yeah.
How are we going to engage families? How are we going to reach out to them? Um, because I see number three utilized families as a compass and vehicle to achieve success. How are we going to get those families in here?
A lot of that is personal connections. So develop, you guys have family liaisons who are working with families already, working with the family liaisons to bring in families. Um, you know, the work that that we're already doing here. The education staff really has, um, a strong key. One of the things that, um. I forget, it's like seventy-five percent of students, of parents, if a teacher asks them to come to something, will attend because they believe that that is. Um, two things. So they believe that it'll be beneficial for their student in school and they believe that the teacher believes in them as the parent and that's why they're asking them to attend. So, you know, really kind of utilizing all of those strategies to, um, support the the family engagement advisory team. And I will also say that, um, having a good cohort of parents on that committee. Um, not just teachers who are parents, um, but but parents from the community who are not engaged or not with, um, the staff of the school. Um, and a lot of that, a lot of those families then will go out and talk with other parents and kind of use that as that ripple effect. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, somewhat. Um, I'm I'm really curious to see how this is going to work when we talk about engaging families. Uh, and I'll say it, I mean, we don't have a community that is really supportive. Evidence by our most recent. School board elected. Ms. Pessini was the only one who turned in her petitions when we had two open seats.
Okay.
One person filled out petitions to be on school board. People should be beating down the door. To get on the school board to help our children. One person out of two. So that gives you an idea of. Family engagement.
Yeah.
It really does.
I don't have an answer to that specific question, but I think that's something that the family advisory team could help with. Um, if if that's a goal that you want to develop, then we sit down and and we look at what were some of the barriers, were the reasons why families, parents, individuals didn't choose to to run for a board seat? Was there a reason why voter turnout is is so low? You know, we we could look at all of those those pieces. Um, you know, we do a lot of SWOT analysis, we do a lot of, um, PDSA cycles. Um, you know, a lot of where are the goals that that you want to accomplish and then how do how do we get there? How do we develop step-by-step plans? And kind of, you know, bring it back to the basics of of how do we achieve each of those goals?
Right. So what's the timeframe for developing this family engagement advisory team?
I think the team should be ready to go and trained probably sometime October, November-ish and then spend, you know, the bounds of the year writing a strategic plan. Has to come back to the administration. Um, I think the advisory team will will do some, you know, like work around where did it, meeting with the administration to to determine where do we? Want to, what are the goals that we want to accomplish, right? Is absenteeism one of the, one of the things that you want to? Want to solve is having, you know, a more robust, um, pool of candidates for the board, one of the things that you want to address. Um, and then kind of working through that plan, through the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four stool year. And I would say put together a three-year plan. Um, I've seen people do five-year plans. Not that a lot can't happen in three years, but a lot more can happen in five. I think three is usually a good. Um, and then you work with that, like you would a strategic plan for the school.
So just thinking in that timeframe, we're geared up before we even start to engage and try to invite families in?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
If you just talk about a whole year cycle of getting the engagement advisory team. Selected onboard, trained, ready to go and developing your strategic plan, we're not even talking about engaging families for a solid year.
Well, Epic, Epic has a family engagement coordinator here, so we're we're already working on that. So that's kind of going at the same time. With the team, we'll have, we'll have a staff person who'll be here working with the team. Am I answering your question? I don't think I am.
No, you're not. Um. We're talking about developing this engagement advisory team. You just went through a year-long process to get everything in place. So that's why I'm asking. It's going to be a year before we even get any families to work with this team. From what I'm hearing.
No, we have families.
So Epic has been involved with us for two years. So they have an office with two, two employees, right? Two, uh, and they've been giving community, so they get community referrals. There's been reports that have been going on there. This is going to just open up and make it larger. Um, so that advisory team, then we can escalate or increase, accelerate rather, the the timetable there so that we can get that a little more focused because. As you can tell, this is one of our, this is a goal that cuts across pretty much all of the other goals. Everything regarding attendance, we know attendance will, performance, you know, increases trust, which is one of our goals as well. So. Having a a stronger community or family involvement and a family engagement in the schools is really something that we value. The the programs that we currently are offering, families still have the opportunity to do that and have been taking advantage of that. This is sort of the next level of that. Um, and that will take us several months, but while we're developing sort of the strategic plan, we can, we'll still be engaging the community and family members during that time. During that time period. So it's not as though we're not going to see any changes for a year. Things will be in place, but that advisory team will sort of grow and continue to steer and advise what is actually happening.
There's two pieces to this. So we can do it, the timeline, whatever works for you. If you want to accelerate that, we're happy to do that. If you've got the staff and and can make that commitment. At a more, at a more robust timeframe, we can, we can certainly do that. The goal then also is that this advisory team then kind of moves forward with these initiatives. Um, and we, you know, that's something that then becomes a a school initiative. It's not an epic initiative. It's something that the school kind of takes over and and does. The next, you know, three-year plan, maybe the advisory team does it and you don't even need a big. Consultant to kind of walk through that process. Does that help?
Yeah, absolutely. This is more so everybody can hear it, right? So we know what's coming. That's right.
Right. Sometimes you ask questions very early after.
No, I didn't know the answer.
Oh.
So this is more so everybody can hear it.
I appreciate it.
And now you're on record.
Yeah. So we did have a question online. Um, if someone's interested now in gaining access to some of the supports you have, how would they go about that?
Your main number?
I have two numbers. Do you want me to just say them out?
Sure, or can they just kind of take out the family school resource or family liaisons?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the easy answer, pretty much anytime family member or someone's looking for help, is to contact the local liaison. Um, but if you want to read that number off, we can put that out as well.
So the main number is seven one six, two eight nine, three four nine zero. So that will get the family engagement team, but it'll also be the number for the Family Opportunity Center. Um, the other thing, if it's specific to the Family Opportunity Center, it's a really simple email, cataractisfoc@epicforchildren.org.
All right, and we'll get that on our website and Facebook.
Now I'll make sure we have more flyers and brochures.
Thanks.
Okay, next we're gonna move on to our recognition for our retirees.
All right, so this is. I always struggle with this, especially when I think about it because. You know, a school is a building. And a school really becomes, or that building becomes a school when we have students in it and when we have educators. And when I speak to educators, I mean, all of the employees that come to a school district because. As we've just learned, every person influences children, no matter what your role is in the district. And. You know, just like I, I, a parent who's happy for their child when they go off to college, there's also, when we get emotional, geez, I need to think about that. A point where you're like, oh, my gosh, you know, he or she is leaving, I'm not going to see them. They contribute so much to, whether it be at home, your house, or here, our building. And the people that we're recognizing tonight are the individuals who make our building a school. So while we're happy for them personally, that they're moving on to another portion or phase of their life. I think in certain, um, I'll just say sadness in that the contributions of these people have made, the impacts that they've had on their colleagues and students. Is really immeasurable. And part of who we are as warriors is going to be leading, um, or in some cases that has departed. So we are very happy. This is absolutely a hundred percent a celebration. I gotta keep telling myself that, but at the same time. We want to recognize the importance of the contribution. And we have a small gift and we have cupcakes, but that is nothing compared to what we we should be doing to recognize the the impact that you've had. Um, on our students here as well as on ourselves. So, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read off, I know several of the individuals that were recognizing as sort of the class of twenty twenty-three retirees. So these will be individuals who have retired since July one of twenty twenty-two. So some of the individuals have actually, um, retired several months ago. Um, there are few, if you are here, please come down. Um, the first one who I don't see is Ellie Doherty. She was a keyboard specialist at Prospect for many years. She was an essential member of the family there and she, uh, actually retired in September of last year. We have missed her deeply. Uh, she knew pretty much everything that was going on there and was always a solid point of contact. It only took me about four or five weeks from the time that I started here to know that if I needed to know something about Prospect. Uh, or the school district or pretty much anything, I could call Ellie and she would tell me what the story was. Uh, the background behind it and was happy to tell me what to do in a very respectful way as well. So, uh, she was a really important person of our school community and we want to recognize her. Um, she was with us for, and I'm just going to give ballpark numbers, so we'll say over fifteen years. Uh, we also have Roger Bailey who we're recognizing tonight. Roger was the bus driver for us. He is most famously known for the bus garage shuffle, so I was hoping that he would be here tonight. And we could do his, uh, dance, uh, but he is, uh, not able to attend tonight. Uh, he was with us for over fifteen years. Uh, next we have Sean Cannon and I will turn it over to Mr. Seabird. Um, Sean, come on down.
I'm prepared. Dr. Beeler kind of messed me up a little bit because I had a few things to say too.
Oh, well, go ahead. Oh, you're gonna start crying now if I know you.
That is actually a skit today, moving up.
Yeah.
Um.
There you are.
I mean, what I was gonna say also, for 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 the high school in general, we have seven staff that are gonna retire tonight. Um, and over a hundred and sixty years of service for the staff from the high school. And as as Dr. Beeler said, the impact that they've had, uh, at times is completely immeasurable and and they'll never know some of the influence that they've had on the students. But I want to assure each of them, uh, that they are truly appreciated and they've made a huge positive impact on who we are as a school, in a district, in a community. Uh, their service has been truly remarkable and appreciative and obviously we wish them the very best on their future endeavors. As far as Sean goes, Mr. Cannon has been with us for five years. Um, and in that time, he helped transform our tech program. Uh, he was instrumental in creating the steam wing and teaching by way of the engineered by design process. Sean has been a very valuable addition to our programming and we wish him the very best.
Thank you.
If you want to be. All right, there we go. Um, next we have Peggy Rivetti.
She has a pre-K graduation.
Pre-K graduation. She's still working for the district, you know, retire here. Uh, so Peggy has, uh, worked with the district as a teacher assistant for eighteen years. Um, most recently, she's been running our testing accommodation and, uh, in this, uh, in this situation, Peggy has to be very flexible and adaptable to operate this room successfully. And she is a natural at both. Aside from that, she needed to learn about accommodations and be extremely organized. And she again excels in all these qualities. Uh, Peggy is someone who is always on the go. She's never sitting still. She's always going to touch base, uh, with teachers to make sure that the testing that she's doing is is appropriate. So thank you, thank you for your service and enjoy your repair. Nancy DiNapoli. So Nancy DiNapoli, uh, served the district, uh, as a math teacher, uh, for nineteen years. She initially taught at the middle school level. Uh, and then had transitioned to the high school, uh, specifically algebra classes. Uh, Nancy has experienced many of the transitions that the school has gone through and she embraced the changes and continues to work hard, provide our students the very best education. Uh, she is patient, caring, compassionate and willing to go above and beyond for our students. And so Nancy again wished him the very best in return. Next up, we have Becky. Becky has been with us as a teacher assistant for twenty-one years. Most recently, she's been a mainstay in World One London. And I would describe Becky as calm, cool, compassionate, passionate, patient and a true team player. Uh, she has a patience of the same. And is always willing to pitch in and help out. Um, I will truly miss her calm demeanor, willingness to help. We have Terry Frazier. Terry's been a bus driver and a TA with us for, uh, thirty years. Uh, and she is another one who is an actual true team player, willing to do whatever is asked and does so with enjoyment and enthusiasm. The bond that she has with a large number of our students is undeniable as was, uh, described today during Moving Up Day Assembly when all the seniors were cheering for her. Um, they love her and she loves them and that is the legacy that we should all strive to. Uh, Anna Easton. Anna's been a teacher assistant with us for thirty-one years. Uh, most recently, she's been working in the library media center. In that position, it is important to be a jack of all trades. And she readily learned and implemented the skills necessary to run the media center. I would describe Anna as flexible, adaptable and dependable. And I hope you enjoy it. Uh, and then Nancy Madoff. Nancy's been with the district for thirty-six years. Uh, and she hasn't lost the staff.
As I fall down the stairs.
She is, she is still enthusiastic, engaging and excited to teach every day. She is like the Energizer Bunny with a constant smile and kind word. The students love her and have very fond memories of her, her class, her lessons, her songs. She already has plans to be traveling the country in her RV. After thirty-six years of dedicated service to the district, accumulating over two hundred and fifty-six days, she deserves a fun, go relaxing retirement.
Thank you. I don't have words to say.
Yeah, I don't know. Let's move on. I'd like to take you on a trip back to when I first started here back in nineteen eighty-seven. When I got hired during my job interview, Jerry Ackley was the superintendent of schools. And one of the things I had to know was how to spell Ericoid. Probably if I couldn't have done that, I might not be here today. Uh, at the time, the principal was, uh, Tom DeBalsey. Now, I don't know if you guys remember him.
Yeah.
Um, very, very stern. And I remember that during my job interview, he took me around, introduced me to a lot of different people. And two people I remember in particular were Rich Martin and, um, Ha Nujin. And I don't know why I remember this, but I remember them teeing and chuckling to themselves and said, don't you ever play that song, money, money? You're gonna be in big trouble because of what happened at the Moving Up Day, June. So I heard then, hmm, must be they were singing the other version of that song. But you know what? See, the older people my age were laughing. A lot of young people don't know those other words back then. And I remember Tom Falsky just going, he was. Like that, rolling his eyes at those guys. It was, I don't know, I thought it was very funny. This room used to be a huge study hall room. And for the faculty, back in nineteen eighty-seven, when the women walked in, the women sat on the right-hand side and the men sat on the left. It was never interspersed. We had also separate faculty rooms. The women had one and the men had another and used to be a smoke back. Sometimes you'd open up that door and like. Choked out back in there. Uh, when I first got here, there were pep assemblies every single Friday. It was, there's so much school spirit here. George Witcher, he really created a football dynasty here. I'm sure many of the people who go to school here, you remember him. Just, it was phenomenal. And I remember when George Witcher. Just, it was phenomenal. And I remember when George Witcher walked into that gym, it was quiet. You could have heard a pin drop. And also, the football players, very revered. They had their own seats on the gym floor. Same thing when they walked in, nobody talked. It was just dead silent. And since I was not from Salamaca, this was a very odd thing to me. There was this little, I would call it to my friends and family, this little baton thingy that had like these persons at the end. It's like this thing, and I said, "I don't understand it, but everybody wants it." I go, "Everybody, these students, they go crazy. And if you're from Salamaca, you see that? It's like a little tiny baton and they're like, screaming, get this." And then back in that day, once that baton was won, once the Spirit Stick was won, not just a few students touched this, it was like every student in that class had to touch that. It was like gold. I'd like to see those days come back. I think they're making their way since COVID, but it'd be great to see that much school spirit here again. That's such a huge, long-standing tradition. If you don't know what I was talking about, it's the Spirit Stick and they came up. And Nancy, today, during the with me, one of the seniors had number one, the Spirit Stick. And yes, there it is.
I know.
As I watch Movement Up Day today, I was thinking about how proud I have been to be a Warrior. I'm absolutely thrilled that our school can keep the mascot. I'll tell you what, this really means a lot. It means a lot to be a Warrior. And to me, that mascot is Salamaca. That is our identity here. I look on today, I'd start getting a little choked up, so try not, I'm good, just keep going. I looked on today thinking about how much Salamaca has to offer to our students and staff. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find any school in New York State or maybe any state that has as much to offer as we do. I mean, this school is truly magnificent. And one of my pet peeves in life since nineteen eighty-seven has been when a student says, "Oh, there's nothing to do in Salamaca. We offer so much in this school district that it's phenomenal." It's just truly remarkable. Our administration here, I'd like to say thank you to each and every one of you. You always have been supportive of me, the business department, our goals. Chris, as administrator, anytime I needed like to leave or had something going on, he's always there for me. Lloyd, so excited, you're vice principal. I remember you as a ninth grader. Man, look where you've been. Truly proud and grateful to have been a part of the Salamaca faculty for the past thirty-six years and certainly flown by, especially this year. I feel like it was just September, two or three months ago. I've really enjoyed being a part of so many people's lives. I looked at the stage during the Teachers versus Parents gift today and it was so crazy. I'm looking and I was like, wow, I have been here a really long time. Three out of the four parents I had in class, and the only reason I didn't have Laura Higaros because she didn't go to school here, and I had Tony. Tony Higaro was in my class. And I was like, wow, you know, it's really time to leave because I'm getting really old now. It's now I'm having the children, all the children that I taught in classes. I'll miss the camaraderie of the students. I absolutely, I just love the students here, the staff, and the friends I've made here over the years. I've always prided myself on being here for the students. I'll miss the cheers. So much fun doing those. Mike, do one in a minute, sweetie. The talks, the teaching, and educational games we played all the while. I'm not gonna miss all the time it took to come off of those games. Takes hours. Hey, why am I retiring? You know, I still love it here. I really, truly do still love it here. It's just after thirty-six years, I have to do something. I'm still young enough to go and do it. And like Chris said, my husband just retired and he and I wanna do traveling in our RV. But yeah, thank you for everything to everybody. I've been so truly lucky and blessed to have had a career of thirty-six years at Salamaca High School. I am a Warrior!
Mrs. Beaver.
She has worked with Salamaca for twenty-two years. She has worked with students in various departments. During her time here, she started in special education. She moved into the alternative ed program and has been a high school organ and English teacher. Most recently, Kathy has worked in Santa Monica Intermediate with our students and bridge course in Sabbath and then Richmond reading festival. And then for all, she calls students to read at world of grade levels in small groups throughout the day. During these groups, she engages students in private-based learning around. She's created several different novel things at each grade level and has had the opportunity to observe some of her lessons and they are very engaging and rigorous. Kathy is passionate about reading and is able to build strong relationships necessary to move her students forward. This school year, Kathy and I have had the pleasure of sharing these little tiny offices together and it's always a second rock fire and we keep in and clearly can't open the door, you'll hit her every day and smile. And something that you might not know is that every single day this year, she has created a new handwritten inspirational poster that she's put outside of her classroom door. And they're, they're actually real, I haven't been saving them. Because I'm one, we have them, I really appreciate that and it shows her dedication to inspiring and motivating students. Kathy will certainly mentor students. She told me that these children are offering and she loves every single one of them. One thing she has planned for the near future is funding the winter in South Carolina. But she will be traveling back here to visit her children and grandchildren beginning in November because her eleventh grandchild will be born. So thank you so much, Kathy, for your time and dedication to Salamaca and Central School. We can be certain that you have made a huge impact on the lives of your students and you will definitely be. On behalf of Santa Monica Intermediate, we would like to thank you for years of service as a monitor, on garage, and in our cafeteria, nine years of service. Whether she's at the bus garage, you've been like intermediate, she always puts her best foot forward. And Kathy runs the spaceship in our cafeteria, but doesn't even smile and do the She always thinks about what others need. When she makes a decision that's going through a hard time, she takes the time to talk with the students, figure out the best way to support. She does the same for her coworkers and will always speak up on their behalf. She is encouraging, uplifting, and then constantly looking for ways to celebrate our students, whether it's small treats that she purges out of her own pocket, taking the students outside or playing hard games with students during their lunch break. They've built a great rapport with our students, which is evident the minute you walk into the cafeteria. You can usually find her surrounded by kids, probably playing a game of five-star draw, but also maintaining high expectations, fulfilling students' expectations. Kathy, you have come into the life of these students. Many of them you see every day. They will definitely miss you. Santa Monica Intermediate Administration will also need you. We can always count on you to keep life organized and functioning at our greatest capacity. Good luck as you move into retirement. We hope there's a joy put down in you.
While we're talking about transportation, I do want to recognize, this is Sue Haynes. She is retiring as well. And I think it's important to remember the impact that our transportation department has on our students. And we say this, but I think it's really important to recognize that they are the first people that represent our school that a student sees in the morning. And they have the ability to set the tone for what that child's day is going to be like for the rest of the day. They're also the last person to represent our school district when the student steps off of that bus. And all of our students have the opportunity to get picked up and dropped off. And our bus drivers are some of the most dedicated individuals that I have come across and I've been in several districts. And I want to just recognize the work that they put in each and every single day to make sure that our students have a great start to their day and that it's a great end of the day when they step off the bus. So this is Sue and Terry and Patty and everybody else who has been one of our bus drivers and with our transportation department. So thank you very much and we wish Sue the best in her retirement as well. Well, Mrs. Oaks is at the pre-K celebration, so I have the honor tonight of speaking about Mr. Timothy Schnopf. Come on down. You're stuck with me. Congratulations. So Mr. Schnopf, you started with us, really is a daily substitute. About six years ago?
Yep.
Yep, six years ago. He then, I think his wife might have dragged him to work. I'm not exactly sure how that all got started. But he then became a teacher assistant with us and has been the computer teacher at Prospect for four years. And his impact there, I talked about how bus drivers really sort of start the day for our students. But once the kids get off the bus at Prospect, one of the next people that they see, and it's perfect that he has this yellow shirt on, because when I think of Mr. Schnopf, I think of you as a minion. He dresses that way as a minion.
I do.
Yeah.
There's a minion on my, absolutely.
And for a grown male to be dressed as a minion and have fun with some of our youngest students, I think that's really an important thing for our students to see. And I really want to express the gratitude that that we have as a district for the service that you put in to our students. You have been a riot to work with. You have advocated for our students. You've done everything that you need to do, not just as an educator, but as a person. And I want to thank you for your commitment to the district, to our students, to our staff, and wish you the best. Thank you very much. All right, now, the next two are district folks, so I would ask, let's start with Lynn McGarrah. Come on down. There are a lot of things that we can talk about with regard to Mrs. McGarrah. She, I won't go through how many decades that she's been with us, but it's been several. She started as an English teacher and my understanding is she started with our alternative ed program where she worked with some of our students who don't necessarily fit into the regular education setting. And sometimes that can be some of the most challenging students. But I understand that she had a significant impact on those students and that they were the student, she was the teacher that they looked forward to seeing each and every day. I know when I came here, she had transitioned to the English classroom and she was always a point of information and was very willing to provide insight and guidance to anyone, who particularly me, who I would go to her as a veteran, you could say, "Hey, listen, what are your thoughts here on what should we do?" Since then, she transitioned to the dark side and became an administrator. I don't know, are you happy about that decision or? Okay. Are you saying that with a question mark? All right, all right. So most recently, she has served as an elementary principal, or I'm sorry, as an assistant principal and has been at our older elementary as well as the high school. So one thing to talk about with regard to Lynn is that she'd really run a relatively broad spectrum with her service to our students. Not just in the daily instruction and being, and many times, a parent role model for our students, but now also as the the individual that many of our teachers look to for guidance. So we want to thank you very much for the service that you've provided to our students as well as to our staff and wish you the very best moving forward. Thank you. And unless I haven't done my calculations correct, I think this baby is the last penny. Come on down. So I needed to do, yeah. So I had to call a recent retiree to get a little information and make sure I had my facts correct on both Lynn and Patty. And when the topic of Patty came up, the, this recent retiree that we know was very quick to say, "Well, you know, she started there well before I did." All right, so I won't go into how many years that you've been in the district, but you have been with us for quite a while. You started in elementary education. You, when I came to the district, and my understanding is you were a leader all through, whether it be formal or informal. When I came to the district, you were in the role of a math vote. And one of the things that we, I believe we've done a relatively nice job of providing instructional coaching for all of our staff. And Patty has been a really key person as we've developed that program. And that number of instructional coaches that we have right now for our staff has doubled and doubled again and probably doubled again. And putting that program together, Patty was really a key member of that. More recently, she has shifted to become our Director of Staff Development and Staff Support. She fills that role of which we know is essentially, are essential and very critical to providing professional development for our staff members because that allows them to refine their practice and become better at what they do. She also provides a wide range of other supports for our staff. So Patty, we want to thank you not only for the contributions that you've made for our students for many years, but also to our instructional staff as well as to the other adults in our district as well. So thank you very much. This is a relatively rare moment. Patty wants to say something really.
Without saying thank you for my years of service here, I have literally loved every year I've worked here. I love the people I work with, which makes it really hard to leave here. And I have to thank all the administration and board for allowing me to grow in our district. It's really, really hard to leave. Everybody keeps saying, "Are you on a countdown? You on a countdown?" And I'm like, no, I'm at your time. Enjoy all my days that I still have here. And I'm gonna miss everybody. We've had a lot of fun. And the coaching staff, like you said, they're tremendous and they have helped me perform my job. I kind of done it without the coaches. And all the other administrators. I don't have eleven grandchildren, but I'm gonna have a Fourth of July. I'm just ready to enjoy my grandchildren, my husband, my I love you here every year. So thank you, everybody.
All right, let's see if we can squish together for a photo. We could do like two rows of five or just four. Okay, I'll just get out of the way. Ready? One, two, three. Thanks. All right, and also for our retirees, we do have a celebratory cupcake as well. So let's take a five to seven-minute recess. I do want to make a note that as these individuals, the class of twenty twenty-three retires, the district is losing three hundred and twenty-one years of experience. And that experience and dedication is not, that will take us three hundred and twenty-one years to make up for the contributions that you've made to the district. So thank you again and grab a cupcake. Anybody can grab a cupcake.
And don't forget, we need subs.
Congratulations.
Are you going to stay or are you gonna retire?
We'll be there. I said I'll be there.
Everybody get their cupcakes.
All right.
All right. We'll move on to our communications, so we'll start with our public communications. What about titles?
I think Erin's gonna do every other meeting.
Oh, okay. Then we will move on to a central office message, so Karen?
I'm good.
Exactly.
Oh, boy.
Mrs. Janie, the Prospect 3K celebration.
Well, then we'll move on to the board message, so we'll start with Tracy, how about you start with you?
Hello, this is my first public meeting. And I'm thinking that I like it. There are a lot of great staff after. And personnel and board members, my fellow board members. So, I would be here and look forward to participating, really to stay for the next five years.
Thank you.
Oh, man, so how do you top that little ceremony here? Again, I went to one of that, I was here about some, two years ago. But to sit here and watch that again. All of you, you're such special people. And to see those retirees, and they gave the number 361 years of service. And Mark, and he got a little emotional. Choked up a little bit, and just being there, I got tears in my heart, so beautiful and, I don't know. Schools and teachers and faculties and administration are special people. Thank you.
I just wanted to welcome Tracy. One year ago, I was sitting right where you are, so yeah, a little bit of advice to you as time flies. Just absorb it, there's a lot to absorb, ask questions. There's a good team here that will walk you through anything and don't be afraid to ask questions, because you'll have a lot of them. And sometimes it's fun hearing them try to tell you what all the academics mean and all the other. Sometimes they don't even know they're using so long. The other thing is, I just want to congratulate all the retirees. It's, some of them, I had as teachers and maybe how fast time flies, but. Yeah, but it's always good to see them do beginnings, and I hope they all enjoy a new part of their life on that end. Lastly, I just wanted to do a shout out to some of our seniors. For everybody that still doesn't get to the only times like I do, I don't know why, I wanted to get a phone call for my birthday. There's been quite a few of our students that have been recognized for scholarships to colleges, and I just wanted to do a shout out to them. Congratulate them on not only getting into, you know, the college, whether they wanted to do, but also doing it for the sport that they wanted to do it with. So, congratulations to them.
Yeah, I'd also like to welcome Tracy to the board, she brings a lot of welcome knowledge and experience. You know, you look forward to working with you. It's like, as Ted said, it's a great board. Very involved for us, you know, in the US school community, so you're welcome. Also, congratulations to all the retirees. I know some have left. I was going to tell Annie, since she's way too young to retire, I can say that because she's great. So, congrats, you know, thanks, thanks for all your years of service. And last thing is, we're coming up at the end of the school year, you know. You made it through another year, you know. Let's get through this week and the offset. Thanks.
Carrie? Yeah, I got a bunch to talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes going so far down the line here, it touches on a few things.
Yeah.
Obviously, first and foremost, welcome aboard Tracy, congratulations on winning the election. And I know you're gonna have fun for the next five years, five years after that, five years after that. Um, yeah, no, seriously, a lot to talk about. Congratulations to the retirees. You know, job well done. I always, I always use the term bittersweet, it always is. You know, we're sad to see you go, but for me, I'm happy to see you retire as well. Go and do that next phase of life, you know, that's one of the things that I look forward to at some time, and I can't even imagine when that's gonna be. But, you know, retirement, it's go live life, go do something fun, so bittersweet, congratulations. Yeah, we're almost at the end. You, graduation next Friday. I hope everybody has their speeches ready, well rehearsed, ready to go, memorize. Yeah, well, a lot of excitement going on, it seems like June is always busy, you know, it's always busy, a lot going on. Moving update today, yesterday I was able to go over and watch the senior walk at Prospect, and then over here at the school, I have a senior this year. Yesterday, I was at Prospect, I have a third grader as well, so, you know, it's a lot going on, but, you know, it's an exciting time, really is. Just hope everybody really buckles down, reads this week, gets through these tests, gets over the last hurdles of the year, and just finishes super strong. Red, red finishing, so. Staff, all of our staff, as always, thank you, thank you for everything you do. You know, we don't get to this point without you guys, you know, our kids don't get here without you guys, so thank you. Oh, another shout out. Andrea Cook. Uh, it was a surprise to me, but I went to NAIE of New York, and it was a conference held up at Seneca Niagara. And I was there just to do an opening remarks on behalf of the Seneca Nation. But what I didn't know was our own Andrea Cook was receiving an award that day, and I found out later that day after I'd already left. Teacher of the Year, congratulations. For those of you who don't know, NAIE is Native American Indian Education Association of New York, which started about, it was 92? Thirty years ago, or no, yeah, thirty years ago, yep. And they've been working with indigenous districts and, about New York State, just trying to help the education piece, helping out our kids. It's a great conference, I went last year for the whole day, this year we had presentations there, unfortunately, like I said, I missed it. We were bummed that I missed the presentation of the award. So that was awesome. It's the Sunday, oh, Sunday, we had our Cindy Moore 5K event, our third annual, great event. What it does is we're building with a scholarship fund in memory of Cindy Moore, a longtime teacher here. Right now, we have multiple years already saved up. You know, and every year that we do this 5K, it's just more and more money that goes towards that scholarship fund to create longevity. I believe next year is the last year that kids will be graduating who had Cindy as a teacher. After that, the scholarship requirements will change a little bit, and it'll be open to individuals who pursue a career in education. Or go into college for education. Right now, it's, we're awarding this award to people who are students who actually had her as a teacher. I think like next year is the last year. But it's a great event, supporting a great cause, and of course, we always want to encourage education. You know, and if this is one little piece that hits people to think about, I want to become an educator, whatever it is. Tip them over the edge, get them in education, get them back in our halls here, right? So, um, what else? Seems like there was something else I wanted to talk about. All right. We got an extra, I'll take Brad Stern later, I remember.
I would also like to welcome Tracy aboard. Because for a couple reasons. First, I know she's a great person, the second is she's class 86 along with me. And the third is, it's nice to have another woman on the board here, nothing against all you men, but it's nice to see another pretty face sitting on the board. I'm really thrilled that she's on the board with us, so congratulations, and I am looking forward to serving with you. And my next thing I'd like to say is congratulations to the retirees too. When I look at Penny, not only do I see somebody that's been dedicated to the school, but I remember her as a cheerleader. Who was a couple years ahead of me, so it's like, oh my gosh, she's retiring, does that mean I'm getting to be a retirement angel? But I'm really thrilled for your years of service here and how dedicated you were, I mean Nancy Middaugh, I think my kids have her. And I do remember her actually standing up at a swim meet and doing a cheer. So, it was embarrassing to some of my kids, but they also loved it at the same time, because she stood up and spelled out. Like lady warrior swimming or something, so it was crazy. So, congratulations to all the retirees, you know, they really do a great job. I think Carrie Frazier, what my kids had her as a bus driver, so it's like, I see all these retirees, and it's like, they've touched. Not only my life, but also my kids' lives, so I really appreciate everything that they did, and it's really great. That they are retiring, but they are gonna be missed, and what I was trying to say to Dr. Neeler is, hey, remind them they can come back and substitute at the. You know, for the district, and he thought I wanted us to get subs. Next time I have subs and cupcakes, I guess, just to throw that out there. Carrie mentioned the Cindy K 5K run, I was lucky enough for all my kids to have Cindy. And I will share. A couple funny things, I did participate in the run, and I was cheering people on. Carrie's one daughter Haley just ran it in a phenomenal time, it was like 22 minutes, I'm thinking, my gosh, is she a gazelle or what? And I'm standing there watching all the different kids that are running, and there is a running club. That, that the school has, and seeing all these young kids just coming through and running. And beating me number one was kind of heartbreaking, but watching Carrie's youngest daughter, Lainey. Was running with Riley, and they passed the finish line, and. I'm sitting there watching her, and she comes over and she just sits down and just like, she's like. I'm never running a 5K again. Pretty funny, so, but there was a lot of participation, and it was really great to see the community members that were there. And the students that were there, and just the overwhelming support to carry on her memory. So, thank you to everybody that did participate in the event, and Carrie's daughter. Which I'm gonna cry when I say, Cindy wrote this essay that was just beautiful about Cindy. And if you get online and you read it, you don't understand why I'm crying, because it really. Really touches your heart and makes you realize, like, what a wonderful person that she was, and the impact that she did have on her students. So, if you don't get a chance, please, you know, read the essay, because it was, it was really beautiful. And I'm sorry, I'm taking Chris's tears. That's really all I had today.
Just a note, thank you and welcome Tracy. And to Andrea, you know, sometimes recipients of awards, you're like, I don't understand, how does that person possibly? You know, sometimes recipients of awards, you're like, I don't understand, how does that person possibly get that award? Um, but in this particular case, I can't think of anyone who would be more deserving of that, and it's great to see. That you're getting the recognition that you deserve. Um, your contributions to our, our students. Are immeasurable and now you're making contributions in the role that you have right now to our adults and the students uh for forever. So it really, it really is a suitable honor and I congratulate you again. Well done. Uh, one note, while Mr. Long is here, we do have the playground community build this Friday and Saturday. Do you want to just write a ten second rundown?
Ten second rundown. We're excited to have a playground come at Best Park, uh, very, very busy. Part of our city and community and school, um, and it's missing a playground for the little types and intermediate kids, so. Uh, the board was gracious in allowing us to put together a project. And it's uh, it's coming to fruition this Saturday. We start with a mini build Friday, meet about five to ten uh volunteers Friday. The big build is Saturday. Mr. Brechtlosick organized some timeframes. We're looking at volunteers arriving around eight AM and twelve AM, or sorry, twelve PM for shifts. Bring a ratchet. They have the sockets that will go the ratchets. It's not a requirement, bring yourself, but it's helpful. A shovel in case we gotta clean out any holes. Um, there's some other tools like levels or anything, but if you come with a ratchet, we'll keep you busy. We'll have a beautiful playground to offer our student body and community. Um, side note, it is being turfed, the back quarter of the turf. That's not a bummer, it's just a bonus. When it comes in, it's gonna be beautiful, so, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just a note, uh, of course, as Mr. John already said, a thank you to our educators, our administrators. Uh, I think many people reflect on this year and say that there are some really positive aspects, but it has been a challenging year as we really sort of get back. To our first full year after, and I'm so tired of talking about the pandemic, but after the pandemic, but an awful lot has really changed in how people interact with one another and. Um, I think schools are sort of ground zero for that, so for many folks, it's been challenging. I know especially for our support staff. Uh, and those providing services to our students, uh, it's been very challenging and I wanted to say thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do you remember what you want to say?
No.
Then we will move on to consent agenda.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion second.
Motion by Ted, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose, abstain, motion carry. There is no old business. Under new business, we have our Board of Educational, uh, Board of Education reorg meeting, which will be held July eleventh uh at five thirty. So we need a motion to approve the reorg meeting date.
Oh, there.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Next is our Indigenous Studies Standards. So we need a motion to approve uh the Indigenous Studies Standard Resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Flip. Sorry, second by Ted. Are there any questions? Then I need uh a motion to approve. We have a motion by Flip, a second by Ted, all in favor.
I.
Sorry, opposed, abstain, motion carried. And again, thank you all for all your hard work on developing that. It really is appreciated and. We know it, it took a lot of time and dedication, so again, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Item C is our Catarcas County uh School District with uh Resource Officer Program Agreement. So we need a motion to approve that agreement from July first of twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty-four. Motion second. Motion by, was that Flip Ted? By Ted, second by Carrie. So yeah, motion by Ted, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Next is our MOA with St. Bonaventure University, and that is for clinical placements uh for school of education students. Effective June thirtieth of twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty-five. So we need a motion to approve that MOA. Motion. Motion by Dale, second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item E is our SASSA MOA, so we need a motion to approve uh the SASSA MOA.
Motion second.
Motion by Flip, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item F is we are creating some positions uh for our New York food of New York families. So that is effective May first of twenty-three through August thirty-first of twenty-four. Um, so that is for coordinator, grant coordinator, grant educator, uh, and grant service helpers, two of them. So we need a motion to approve the creation of those positions.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ted. Second by Carrie. All in favor.
I.
I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item G is the creation of a special education uh teacher position effective July first of twenty-twenty-three. So we need a motion to approve that position. Motion, motion by Dale, second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item H is a donation. There is uh three books donated by um Harold Kim Carr. They're each valued at about twenty dollars each, so we would like, we need a motion to accept the donation and to send a letter of appreciation, so.
Motion.
Motion by Flip.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry.
You missed my banner white, but that's okay.
Sure, sure.
Oh, thank you. Oh, there you go. Thank you.
They are beautiful. They really are beautiful.
They're nice.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, next, we have a donation from Sassy's Truck Stop with several things. Uh, there's pens, erasers, rulers, highlighters, uh, pencils, color. Trans stickers, markers, you name it. Uh, approximately one thousand five hundred and four dollars and ninety-five cents in value. Uh, again, we need a motion to approve the donation and um to send a letter of appreciation. Motion, motion of a flip, so, second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item J, we have two items. We're declaring surplus, a couple of pianos, textbooks, manuals. Uh, resource boxes and uh some magazines. So we need a motion to decree those items to just motion, motion by Dale. Second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Next, we have our NISBA Area Three Director Election, so uh we need to cast a vote for Christine Schnars. Uh, for area director, uh, area three director to be approved, so we need a motion to approve the nomination and cast the vote for her. Motion, motion by Ted, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item A is our Personnel Consent Agenda, which is broken down into several areas. So we have uh personnel action item A, B, uh, let's see. A is just our regular. Retirements, termination, renovations. B is for. Uh, summer athletic camp teachers. C is for summer steam camp teachers. Four is for summer adventure camp teachers. Uh, five is for summer program teachers. The six is for summer school. Oh, so. With that, uh, we need a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, E, and out.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie. Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item H uh is. Uh, personnel action number seven, and that is their food service manager position. So we need a motion uh to approve the personnel. Uh, item eight, H.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Ted. All in favor.
I, I.
Opposed, I will abstain, motion carry. Item J is our confidential secretary position for Janelle Owens. Uh, so we need a motion to approve that contract from June fifteenth of twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty-four. Motion, motion by Dale, second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor.
I.
I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Uh, let's see. Item K is.
I forgot to put the motion and second in there.
Okay, I was gonna say that we needed a motion, so we need a motion uh for administrative. We have a tenure teacher which began on May twelfth. So we need a motion. Motion by Flip.
Second.
Second by Dale. All in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry. And lastly, we get to introduction, introduction of new staff. We have anyone?
I don't believe we have anyone here. I'm not sure we have anyone online, but we will make sure that we give them the warrior welcome when we see them.
It sounds like uh, yeah, ten.
Oh, tenure. Oh, Katie, Katie Rogers. How exciting. Um, oh, well, Mrs. Oakes isn't here. Well. She is, so I've had the opportunity to work with Katie, sort of, wouldn't say that closely. But every interaction that I've had with her. I would say she is exceptionally in tune with not only the students, but the building itself. When I think back to when I would, would hire um new teachers, there's all sorts of qualities that a person looks for. But in many times, it boils down to, does that individual get it? Okay, and you can't really put really good words around and quantify what get it means. But principals and good leaders and people know what that means, right? So when I think of Katie, I think she absolutely gets it, right? She understands what the important aspects are of, of working in a school. She understands many of the dynamics that occur. She understands some of the politics. And she's able to maneuver through that environment in order to get done what's best for our students. We've seen that time and time again. Every day, she makes an improvement in a student's life, if not many students' life. And we want to thank you and recognize the work that you've done up to this point and congratulate you on receiving.
Each, yep. He gives you the cheers.
Well, I didn't realize that five of the teachers that I had were retiring. Now we're here having them, many of them like crisis. I've seen Laura retiring, but no, I really do um love my job at Prospect and. When I went to school to get my masters, it was kind of my goal to read my education back to my community. My kids are here on the front here and they're just, I do love it here and I love all the people that I work with and. My little students, like I'm having a hard time that my third graders, I was in fourth grade and I was just talking to Lainey the other day, I'm like, Lisa, and she goes, Mom, I'm gonna get.
We're glad that you're here. Thank you very much.
Great job.
Yes. All right. So next, we have our board information and reports. So. Uh, we have some couple of voluntary transfers, uh, enrollment numbers or transportation report, uh, student banking.
Yes.
Let me just grab it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, dear Board of Education, thank you so much for your support in all of my musical uh. Beats this year.
Beats.
Beats?
Yep.
Yes. Beats as much. Mildly often, apparently. It has meant so much that I have been allowed and encouraged to participate in numerous conferences, honor bands, and festivals this year. Which would not have been possible without the financial support that the district provided in the form of both transportation and festival fees. I do not know another district in the county, let alone our region, that would send a student to so many great experiences and so freely as Salamita. It has truly been a privilege and honor representing this district, and I hope for the next year to bring more of the same. Thank you, Mitchell Schmuckler.
So, yeah. Uh, we also have student letters regarding the Alliance Program uh for the board members, and then we have a. Let's see, some policies. Um, our Seneca Intermediate Yearbook, which I'm looking forward to looking through. It's always good to see the kids. Uh, and then we have our upcoming events, so. Uh, tonight again, as I said, was our UPK celebration. Uh, fourteenth is our grade six through seventh band flag day ceremony to be held at the high school. Uh, reminder, June nineteen is uh no school, it's student team. Uh, and June twentieth is our finance committee meeting. Uh, June twenty-first is a senior parade um to be held at six PM. Is that gonna be?
I think it's five thirty.
Is it five thirty, nine, six PM?
They chose, did I think about?
Where, where is it gonna be? Do you know where they're starting? And then coming around.
They might be different this year, because I think there's anything certain something going on with construction along that, so I think we're starting, I think it's getting filed with. That street, which I believe.
So can we update that on the website, just to make sure everybody knows? Get your lawn chairs out and. It's always usually a good time to see how the kids are decorated and to come out and see them. So I'm excited to see that. And like they said, uh, graduation, June twenty-third, uh, seven PM. If it rains, are we still just bringing a umbrella, right?
It'll be a torrential, right? We'll do it outside of the rain.
We have a rain data for next day. It's just, I'm just gonna let it rain, that's all. Uh, yeah, so looking forward to graduation and for those of us that need to do speeches, we better get out. And with that, uh, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of uh superintendent evaluation. We do not look, we're not gonna do any business when we come back out, so. Yeah, for everyone. Motion, motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Carrie, all in favor.
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming. Congratulations on your award.